Okay, we have all meetings ordered and have roll calls.
Travis Campbell.
Here.
Bill Conover.
Here.
Aaron Hockins.
Here.
I think the note on your desk that Ashley wanted to amend the agenda to include the resignation.
I want to invite now.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda. Second.
Ashley, I guess they're gonna throw you in now.
Guest is there?
On first person.
You haven't approved your minutes from the last meeting yet.
Aye.
Did it approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Did we?
No.
Okay, deal.
Approval of amended agenda for last meeting?
We already did that. I make a motion to approve the minutes of three ten twenty fifteen as now each one the other one.
Here, second.
Second.
Okay. Before we go to the guest, are there any other active?
Thank you for ending the agenda. I wanted to speak with the council, both inform the council against some direction. As of just several hours ago, Laura Layton submitted her resignation as a, not only as a member of the cemetery committee, she was serving as our treasurer. So, I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to be diligent and let you guys know of that resignation. I see that you have a copy of the resignation letter. And I also wanted to discuss with you, I know the last time we were bringing new people onto the cemetery committee, the council required for applications to be filled out. I'm assuming that it's still going to be the case. And I wanted some direction on whether or not the council would consider it necessary to, I think, did we advertise last time? I don't remember exactly. Or did we just go by word of mouth?
I think we just went by word of mouth and Facebook.
So, I just wanted to, like I said, make sure you guys know what's going on. And I'm open to any guidance that you want to provide.
For my part, I would just appreciate those that come on, come through the application process, just so we can take a look at who they are and what their agenda is and vision is.
Obviously, we'll be seeking applicants. The committee has not had a chance to discuss this, maybe it just happened, but in the very near future, hopefully within the next week, we will discuss it and try to do a game plan, come up with some names for people potentially. And then I guess the thing for me to do at that point is to have them come up here and get an application from you, correct?
Yes.
Alright, that's all I need.
If we can get it in by the next meeting, which is the twenty-fourth, then.
Okay.
Okay, we're going back to that guest. Luke Belt, request business license for gay and male custom welding and certification.
Yes, I got it. How are you? Okay. We're trying to start a business down in B Highway.
B?
Yeah, just pretty much welding, custom certification, anybody anything needs?
That on the left side?
Uh, yeah. Four or five.
Pass Larry Peter.
Uh, I'm not sure. I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah. Big moment.
Yes. Yep. Uh, that's pretty much it. We're just looking to get business licenses for.
Custom welding shop.
Yeah, we're turning the shop into a full customer investigation. Uh, Tom, where we've done, uh, anything like that. Yeah, we did attract about repairs on farm equipment or stuff like that.
I make a motion to, Luke Belt, business license for Jim on custom welding certification, four or five, Grand Lion Pro. Your second on that?
Second.
All over the paper. You got a glass, Bert?
Thank you.
Take him up and say all of you.
Alright, thank you.
Number two, man's a cemetery.
Hello. I reviewed the tape that I believe Mr. Farmer put up from the audit. And one thing that seemed odd to me was that the auditor repeated multiple times that there were the same concerns last year. I'm not everyone to come and bitch without bringing some sort of reasonable, what I feel is a reasonable solution. So, I brought some information that, like you, at your convenience, to look over. And what this is, is it provides several different training options on the QuickBooks program? Because it just may be an issue of lack of knowledge. And I think that before movements were made to terminate employees or to reprimand employees, I feel like that training has to be available to them. The reason why I feel that is, I started my business and it rapidly expanded, and all that happened was, my manager came in and said, "I put QuickBooks on your computer, you can figure out how to use it." And in my yearly audit process, I had some of the same issues. payroll was double injured, taxes were withheld in different places, because on the back end of the QuickBooks system, much of that's done automatically without the user's knowledge. I'm just a fan of properly training. And if folks here aren't trained, it falls on somebody. And just reprimanding employees or just terminating employees necessarily isn't always an option, or it shouldn't be, in my opinion. This is some information, some of you may have already thought of some of these things, but it provides a kind of in detail dictation of how teaching employees and training them properly can provide better service for your business. And it's not just limited to small business. It can be used, all of this is applicable to municipalities as well. Then there's training programs at Missouri Southern and all the way over to that page of stuff, both our technical college in Springfield. I speak with Missouri Southern University regularly. They provide discounts, which is already, it's already a little price of a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a session per employee. They provide discounts for unit municipalities, excuse me, to be able to utilize that training. And the state actually takes up a portion of the cost for the unit municipalities. So, it isn't necessarily a hundred and twenty-nine person, even though that seems like a great savings to me over the high cost of an audit because of these messes. So, that's really all I came to say.
Well, I'm gonna pick up before we run off. Have you had any of these experiences?
Yes.
We've worked with this?
Yes. I did not understand QuickBooks. I could not get it right. Every year, my, for three years solid, my audit came back badly. And he said, you know, "You need to change this, this, and this." And he gave me a detailed list, just like you received here, from the employees that sit involved. But if I'm a roper and I only work with shingles, and I've done shingles my whole life, and then you tell me you want metal, you can't expect me to be successful and do that. So, I went to these training programs. I've not had a bad audit since. My business has expanded. I deal with over seven million dollars of other people's money every year. Multiple accounts in multiple facets all across the state. I've never had a bad audit since, and that's been seven years ago. So, I think that it's something that you may want to look into. And they offer them at various times of the years, various days, various hours. And I think that it could be something that could fit in here. And it should be paid for, in my opinion, by the city and by the employees.
I appreciate you. And I want to say, I hope we can do this, but look into it at least. Take our time, like maybe until after election, when I've already told this guy. Go ahead and look at this, very serious, cause it's a very serious problem.
We're dependent on those.
And we're gonna be missing a lot of things if we don't have them. So, I really appreciate you coming. And I'm gonna be praying for the idea that somebody will take into this and see that we can at least look into the program and try to help our city.
Yeah, and that's, that's all I'm shooting for.
We have trained personnel that knows a lot about it, but for, like you said, QuickBooks is tricky.
It is.
And we're not getting in.
And if you've never dealt with it before, or if you came from the situation of hand ledgers, it is almost impossible, I would say impossible, to go in there, sit down, and just figure it out on your own without doing some sort of tutorial. And then those are tricky. I didn't have any left personally with the online programs. I had to go and sit in class. I'm just one of those people that learns in that manner. And several other small business owners that have set up QuickBooks for their system have been very successful with this program as far as audits are concerned. And the little hundred and twenty-nine dollars a man, discounts for municipalities, I'm thinking you need it in the extreme cost of those audits.
In your bills, man, did you assume you were responsible to take your training or they send you because you just wanted to get it right? Or did you determine that you wanted to get it right?
It was coming to the point where I was gonna be terminated and.
Did you go yourself or they sent you?
I went myself.
So, you just made up your mind that you was gonna get this right?
I was gonna get it right, yeah.
How, and maybe somebody else could answer this, how long do we have the QuickBooks in our system? Has it been ten years?
No.
Five years?
We were doing both manual and QuickBooks. And then, four years ago?
Two thousand and eleven.
We went to QuickBooks.
In two thousand and eleven?
You know, some folks aren't gonna like that idea that they have to go to train more, that they need to go to training, but it comes down to, those audits are very costly for the city, and I'm one of the citizens that assisted paying for that. Like I said, I'm not a fan. Ira kinda knows me, and I'm not a person to just come and bring a bitch with the city. And I know firsthand that this very much helped me. And it helped others in small business because it's just tricky and it's hard.
I appreciate you, I really do. I'm glad you came tonight. I hope everybody's listening and at least looked this over.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Give us a chance.
The contact information for the folks at Missouri Southern that handle that, we'll find on page three. Page four is just some general information about OTC and what their different levels of QuickBooks, because there's actually four classes, what their different levels entail. And from each description, I see things that are used in city business in each description. So, I feel the best case scenario would be that the employees that need the training go and receive all four classes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, over. Accept the audit, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen?
I make a motion to accept the audit, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
Here, second.
I'll second.
All over the paper. Three and all. Number two, on over. I approve the final invoice to Taylor Green PC in the amount of five thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll make a motion to pay the final invoice to Taylor Green PC in the amount of five thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Your second on that?
Does that make that, does that make that audit, how much does that make that audit over? Can somebody come up and figure on that?
Eighty-five, seventy-five.
Eighty-five, seventy-five. And they assume they wrote off themselves six thousand dollars, sixty-five hundred.
Remember, was all you saying exactly?
Yeah, was the total, was the total audit that was supposed to be sixteen thousand, ended up being twenty-six thousand. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
The total we owe now, is this gonna be the total?
We've already paid, we've already paid one.
Yeah, but this is another one.
Did you, I'll second that.
Okay. All over the paper. Three and all. Okay, we got number three here. Jamie Hickman, Golden Book Contact. We haven't heard from, I haven't heard from Jamie lately, and he's having a lot of time of sickness. But, what did you guys wanna do anything, go ahead and counsel out, or did anybody talk to Jamie? We gave him till the fifth of February, just like an interview.
I think that's what we decided, I heard him talking.
Yeah. I guess he's not interested. And I'm sure we don't want to mess him up, he does have a lot of, he has a lot of, I haven't heard about his life in a while, but it's been good, so. So, we're just mostly gonna touch base, or we don't have anything to say, I guess we'll just let it rest, either way, there's nothing to, back off of, or nothing to bring it on downwind. Okay, do business. Ellen White, recycling center, gonna be off work for two weeks starting March twenty-four. Just letting you know, Ellen.
Well, I need, here's the deal.
What do you?
We don't have anybody to take the trailers and stuff. So, are we gonna close the recycling center for two weeks? He's gonna have gallbladder surgery. He can't drive, he can't.
Well, do we have a, do you have anybody that does that when he's gone? Do you have any?
Yeah, nobody asked me or said anything to me about it, but we've always done it before.
You done it when he was gone?
Cause Thursday is our off day. Sanitation will run on Thursday, so Kevin can take.
Take the trailer?
Yeah. How many times will he be doing, two twice?
Yeah, just two Thursdays.
And that's all? Otherwise, it'll be locked out there?
Well, I mean, we can leave it unlocked and monitor it, but.
Well, usually it's unlocked, or he takes the trailers with him.
Yeah. But I mean, even like on Mondays and Tuesdays, we kinda monitor it.
So, is that, is that stretching it thin? Are you still providing some help with Victor?
Yeah, but still, it's not that.
Managing that alright?
Um, yeah, it'll be, it'll be alright. It's not that big a deal on Thursdays for, for that, when he got downtime in between that, in between trailers and stuff, so. It's just kind of a, about a thirty, forty-five minute burst, and then he's back.
If I think mine, you're done, go ahead and let, can do it all you wanna.
Basically, it's just an FYI, isn't it?
Yeah, he's having surgery.
He's having surgery.
Well, I'm sorry, sir. But FYI, to me, don't mean that it's already settled. Are we, is Jim gonna keep it open or?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Okay, alright. Is that all we do then? FYI, huh? Okay. Okay. Number two, Randy Norton with Missouri Rural Water Association would be, would like to schedule a meeting. And that's with Dean Spurges here and everybody working with him. Is this about Victor and about the smoking dealer and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I contacted Randy Norton, oh, it's in Muffettville, and gave him a recap of the meeting we had with DNR on the fifths of January. And he related that the city was a member of this organization, and that he would be glad to come down and speak with the city regarding some of the assistance that they can give toward smoke testing of sewers and sewer's investigation. It's, it's pro bono, I mean, it's for free. But they don't actually do it, I don't think. Now, he might stay with you for a while, but he, he is there mostly for instruction or the medical. But he said he'd be glad to come down and talk with you about some of the services they provide.
Yeah, they talked to Springfield a little enough, didn't they?
Yeah, yes.
So, what?
On another note, I contacted the, I believe the lady's name was Ms. Bassett, with Community Services, a new organization that they had started there in the region. And their, that office serves to assist communities in pointing them in different directions where sources of funding and assistance are available. And she said she'd be glad to talk to the city anytime. But it's up to whenever we want to contact him and have him see if we've come down.
Yeah, well, maybe we could work at work and be handy for him.
Yeah.
And you're, you're pretty loose, see, for us. And maybe get it even in the daytime, or Johnson be in on it. And Victor'll be here already, and that way, I don't know, we got equipment laying down there.
He can, he'll probably either meet in the daytime or an evening, whatever, whatever your fellows' purpose is on.
Would you try to work that in? Work with, work with him and see when he could come, and then we'll get, call him and he's here. Bill wants to be there, he's a therapist, too. Anybody else in the council that wants to be there, of course. But the main thing is, if it works for them, or if he's coming down here to work with us to teach us how to start smoking, and actually, I know that Victor's been out and smoking the whole, and Jim's in the smoke. And this guy coming, of course, to be the expert. But we do have equipment, though, that we haven't ever used ourselves. We could have that available, so he can look that over and make sure you've got the right things, and see where we get the Ascolms and all that.
So, we're just gonna let, let him make a, make a date that would work and then?
Yeah, well, that's how I say it anyway. We'll try to work the best we can, let him and Victor do and that guy, and everybody that, the work program mainly is you, you, and you, and that guy coming. I can show up, see what they just want to announce. We work on that, Dean?
I will.
Thanks, Luke. Okay. Fire chief, Captain Johnson, be guarding tanker seventeen.
Reason I got that on there tonight is the fire department keeps getting rid of fuel in order to truck setting outside. When it's a department that has vehicles set outside, same thing, but we keep catching everything on that truck that's setting outside. Tanker seventeen is a seventy-three international. Archer didn't hurt fine for it. We used it twice last year. What we'd like to do is put it out for bids, see if we can sell it, because it's costing us insurance and no one bought, we're using it. And the age of the truck is only about four of us, maybe five that can drive that truck.
Grammy truck?
Yes. And, and we could pick up inside where it's set, and we might have to put up another bid in the import. But we got, that's what we wanted to do, out humans tonight, you know, the insurance for not using the truck, I mean, twice a year, which really.
Maybe even total coverage.
Yeah, I think it's total coverage, John.
That's terrible. If you're not using.
On the tanker, you can run the district tanker to run it out.
Yeah. That's, that's why I said, the district got the tanker now, and I forget how long we've had this international, it's been a long time ago. And last time we had to work on, we like never found a place to get it back and run it. So, if something happens to, I'd like to put it out for bids. Now, if we put it out for bids, I can put it on our Ozark Gateway Chiefs Association email list, and that can also be sent over, there's another Chiefs organization in Springfield, Branson, Kane, that way, Webster, Ken, that we have connections with. So, there's a chance there may be hundreds, hundreds of people that could see this email that might need a truck, like, but that's why I'm presenting the tools to.
Totally grandy without a tanker though?
Yes, but if we're not using it.
In the case of a tanker need of some kind, it's mutual aid.
You've got, we have mutual aid coming anyway from the shell, diamonds, or stuff, so where do we need it from?
Why don't you just move one of the district trucks out like the contract says you're supposed to?
Obviously, this contract says that, I have to beat it.
It says it's spaces, but it's just, it can be.
So, that'd be up to you guys to discuss that with the district. I can't talk for the district, okay? I'm not their board.
Well, the yellow truck pissed up forever, and it's not in the business, we need to sell it to.
If we can get a carburetor on it, it's points for ISO, just for the equipment that we want.
I just don't, I mean, I don't see selling grandy stuff.
Well, that's, again, that's why I brought, I'm not gonna argue, either you want to or you don't.
I wouldn't get much out of it. But it's gonna get related insurance, which would be full coverage, man, I would need more than half a fair, full coverage, a lot better.
Is, is the, is the apparatus itself causing the, our amount of equipment to be set?
We've tried to build everything for both departments.
So, right, right now, then, all of the Grammy cat, we'd pump her, if those, if that was going to happen.
We had a pumper and brush truck.
A pumper, a brush truck.
Two brush trucks. And the yellow truck. It adds up, yeah. I mean, it's an idea, we just wanted to throw it out, actually.
So, actually, would you say the name another way? Put as the insurance company on that.
I don't know, it's, they group it all together, it's, we have, okay, you see, try to get it split out.
Well, is that something that maybe needs to be replaced? Something else?
Is that a better truck?
Maybe spot, maybe something newer, a little bit? Is there something out there that possibly could?
There's always trucks.
We've already approved a canopy, haven't we?
Yeah.
And in fact, where that line actually, how much better it'll be built without that?
Where, where we're gonna end up having put it, there's lighting, that height, behind that building?
Yeah, set it out, out so.
We're gonna put it in a garage, but they cut blocks off the storage building, so that's what we keep.
So, about a mark off, close to four thousand dollars? I mean, three thousand dollars? With the height deal you had to put in it, the loft you had to put in it, so you wouldn't have to be spending that three thousand dollars? And you dropped your insurance?
But, you know, like I said in the first, we're the only department to get rid of you, we're having vehicles outside, there's two police cars that sits outside, Jim's truck sits outside, sanitation truck's setting outside. But yeah, we catch.
Well, I'm glad you brought it to us, I don't know if we're gonna hang it up.
Well, I think I'd like to think about this. What I'd like to do, I. But in your, in your thoughts, actually, your thoughts are, is we should probably place the yellow truck in there, just because of the ability of parts and such.
Yeah, I didn't, I never dreamed that it'd be so hard to get carburetors, but seventy-two four. But, I guess seven four, manufactured by Holly, four Ford, and nobody recognizes it now.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-two.
So, probably updating some of those is probably what we should do in the relatively near future. Let's think about this, just, I want to.
I just, I just wanted to bring it to your attention as another option.
Can we table this in for a?
Okay.
Make a payment?
I make a motion to table this.
Your second regarding. Everybody wants to table it, thank you. This been a Jim channel regarding sanitation truck.
Yeah, he got this, it went down Thursday, we had to put it in the shop to get it repaired, and the total bill was seven seventy-three.
Seven?
Seventy-five.
I'm back this morning.
I might tell you how it is here.
Seven seventy-three, seventy-five.
Oh, there it is, seven hundred and seventy-three, okay.
Yeah, his number four injector.
Necessity. Would you take that?
B and L, my car's here.
Truck and trailer repair, we're in mail shop.
Well, like we was talking there this morning, though, with them being a mobile deal, that's, that's a good deal.
Yeah, and I said, you know, his hourly rate for diesel mechanic, I thought was very reasonable. You know, he is, he told me he was ton certified, gas certified, and worked for Peterbilt for ten years.
Cost you half of that to deliver that truck to him? You had to.
Well, yeah, that's what I told him on, on that deal. He said, he said it's a hundred dollar call out, and I said, well, last time we had it towed over there, it was three hundred dollars to get towed in the show, so.
Same to hundred.
So, he came to Grammy?
No, we had to take it because we had to have a diagnostic step on it.
Okay, what do we do here?
Comes out of sanitation.
Sanitation truck, that'll be coming out of sanitation.
I make a motion to pay the seven hundred seventy-three, seventy-five bill to BNL Truck and Auto Repair. Repair the sanitation truck.
For a second on that?
One second.
All the favors? Three hours. Okay. Bill, number five.
Can I throw something in?
Yeah, Kevin.
Just for information, the district has five pieces of equipment that sits outside all the time.
Huh?
The district has five pieces of equipment that sits outside right now all the time.
Easy, dude?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes. Just for information.
Yeah, thank you.
How many Grammys, dude?
That one over there?
Didn't there a couple of little trucks in Scottsdale City Grammy?
One other pickup, so they've got two.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, number five. Bills to pay, balance on hand, city clerk, collector, waste ward, waste and port, report. Is that you? Got it laid here?
Also, Gene put those just for the board from out there, Mark?
Yeah.
On your desk?
Yeah.
We'll put that on the agenda for the twenty-fourth because that has to be at DNR before or by the twenty-eighth? Okay.
Yeah. Play it a bit, huh?
So, he's going to have a couple of weeks to read it and look at it.
Yeah.
Part of the diesel fuel expenses are so outrageous this month.
Okay, we're done with this now?
Uh, we were... Unless you've got some questions. What I did was put that together in a... In a draft form. If you've got any questions on it or make some changes, additions, let me know. Uh, I can sign it and send it in on your behalf as long as you take action to permit me to do that in my next meeting. Or you can have her put it on your letterhead and you can sign it if you wish.
But this needs to be ready to go next meeting.
It should be. Your input needs to be, um, such that I can make the changes you want. And if we don't have any changes, I think we go along with leaving your letterhead and we will fill your signature. If we can agree on that.
Any questions about it now, just do me a favor.
I'll hold up. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. Either or.
Thank you.
What do you want to do for?
Well, the first bill probably was like at the end of January. She came us into February. We had a short month and then we had to buy diesel again. This is all prepaid.
Well, the sanitation department's over double what it was last year. At this time last year, it was four sixty-five. This year, nine ninety-five. The street department didn't have near as much. I mean, now you guys got a one-time that burns diesel. Last year, well, street department's four sixty-five. This year, it's four fifty-six. Fire department last year at this time charges in March was zero. This year, it's three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And we got it. And since our diesel, almost two bucks a gallon cheaper than what it was last year at this time.
Can pull all those bills and make copies for you? Okay?
If the sanitation is doing, I'd like to... I'd like to see them.
That's okay.
Something we got to call us, get on about that tank running out too.
That's probably what cost you four hundred dollars on your check.
Yeah, the seven hundred, yeah.
It's the first time in a long time that's happened to you.
Does that tank have a filter on?
Yep.
Need to change regularly at this time of year?
They're supposed to change. MFA takes care of it.
They change.
And we have... I don't know what happened, why they didn't deliver. But it's probably been three years, four years since we run out. They've always kept it full, so we don't know what...
Stripling was working the last time.
Yeah, back when Stripling was working, so however long he's been gone.
This time of year, that's just dangerous game with this.
You're right. But, you... You know, usually they come over, uh...
Do they check it or do we request or something?
Yeah, usually Mike just brings it over and keeps it topped off, usually. So, we don't know if it's the weather or... Or what.
So, I guess since we don't have our fuel and voices, there's... There's going to be additional charges on this for fuel.
Um, for the fast trip, I just got there today.
What's that?
Nine hundred ninety-four dollars.
All the computers up and they're on and everything?
If it runs snake tank, puts diesel pumps in, we're going to start doing, putting diesel in at that pump.
Then they're going to be putting it in.
Well, he talked about it, I just...
Well, if it's in the city, I'm sure it'll be about the same price. You're going to have to get it, huh?
I don't know.
You just have to check and see if it's the way through. I don't know if you want.
No, never sure. Yellow's cheaper now, yes.
Well, you should feel down. Well, I do. I think I've got, you know, ten forty cents I've got. Oh, it's all in the cup, it's all in the... But that would be handy, I could really hear it in the town. I'd get him some of that for my tractor too. I go everywhere, I go with everybody. Just know a little about... There's not a problem with it. And I'm in... I'm in trouble right now. Get your diesel, Andy. When you get your diesel?
D and D, uh, we did it.
That's... That's what they're talking about, this guy down there back here. He's not put one in.
That's it? Good deal?
Yeah. We're going to get some more new cars coming out, some fancy ones coming out. These are just... Who's saying you're coming in like a piece of...
I make a motion to go ahead and accept to pay the balance on hand. City clerk, collector, waste ward, sales clerk.
Say it now?
Second.
All the favors? Okay. Next part, we have a closed session.
I make a motion for one closed session, according with RMS, RSM six-ten, zero-two-one, Reverend, hiring, firing, discipline, personnel.
No second.
Travis Gilmore?
Yes.
Phil Cooper?
Yes.
Kyle Hawkins?
Yes.
You want to make that announcement?
Uh, no, I don't. You have to take care of the meeting and the rest of the last five minutes. I appreciate it. You go ahead and give them the details.
Yes, I'm calling the council meeting back to order at nine fifteen.
Chief Kirk finished taking a minute?
Hi. I'm not city clerk. I'm sorry.
I brought... The decision was made, discussed and voted on. Vote was two to one to dismiss Fawa effective tonight. I need a motion to... If there's not anything else to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn. We've got a first and a second. Need a vote to adjourn the meeting. Really?
Really? You got that, huh?
Council meeting adjourned.